We're spending this good time right now. I'm downstairs in the room. All right, seeing that we, I'm gonna call me an order, we have, um, I don't have a chair report. Everybody, welcome to our hybrid meeting. We're gonna go to Julie Olmady for a report, uh, right now, because she's at another meeting and she wants to do her ad hoc, skate park and maybe even touch on the East Ranch project that she's working on, Julie.
Are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, it is so awesome to see all of you guys in person. I am so sorry that I'm not there because I'm looking so forward to just being up close and personal. So first off, good morning. So many exciting things to share. Thank you for the accommodation of letting me at least join via Zoom. Um, first I want to talk about in regards to the skate park and all that is going on. We just came off a pancake breakfast last Saturday. The fundraiser was called Stack It and Rack It. And we made seventy one hundred dollars on that pancake breakfast, so not too bad on five dollar pancakes. Big shout out to our community and their continued amazing support on our fundraising efforts. And that brings us into grants. We have two active grants going right now for the park. I'm just gonna touch on the one with, um, Ocal's. It is the match grant. We of course got your garnish support on that grant. Thank you again. And it has now moved on to finance committee. They've had an initial review. There were questions that came out of that meeting. We are working on those questions right now. But we are in a very, very strong position for this, of course, to get in front of our board. And we're hoping to have that happen, uh, early March. Um, this is a very large grant for the public that's listening. It could get us across the finish line as it is a fifty fifty grant. And, um, we of course have fundraising efforts that can meet those grant requirements. So, but we're working through all the questions with finance committee. Second grant is the Skate Park Project Grant. It's a Tony Hawk grant. We've noted about this grant for quite some time, but it was a matter of when the district as the applicant was willing to support submitting it. Big thank, big thank you to Kitty. Kitty, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear it now. I'm sorry. Okay. Bye.
Um, big, big shout out to Kitty, to Carlos and to Jeff, um, on our team who have actively worked on this grant. It is ready to go. I actually looked at it again this morning. It gave all the ancillaries onto that completed grant and Kitty, if you can hear me, your edits fantastic. Huge asset to have you leaning in on this with your experience. We don't know what this dollar amount may be on this grant because of the way it is structured. But it is not a match grant. It's just a, uh, a grant opportunity with, with the Tony Hawk Foundation and the Skate Park Project. So we're hoping to get that grant submitted this week. That can only just mean more money, which helps us along the way. Um, this coming Saturday is a big event in a Royal Grande called Vert Jungle. We are part of that Skate Park event. Um, let's hope for no rain because there's been a tremendous amount of effort put into that, similar to our Skate Day. A lot of pros, they're coming in from Spain. Um, our MC who hosted Skate Day, which was, uh, Dave Duncan will also be there. So, uh, we are, like I said, in a booth location. And it's just really important that Skate Cambria and the infrastructure project itself is reaching its arms around the entire central coast of skateboarding and all that is wheels. Um, also May, we have another event coming. It's called Skate Eight Love Project. It's put on by the County of San Luis and Monster Skate Jam starts in April. We're a part of all of it. We're a part of Monster Skate. We're a part of the Skate Love Project. We'll be there in a booth location. So I just want the community to know that we're really out trying to do our absolute best to educate, not just Cambria, but all that is the central coast in regards to our project. So huge thank you. I know that's a lot to cover. It's fundraising, it's grants and it's future events. And, uh, just know that we're extremely active in keeping our foot on the gas. Any questions in regards to the skate park?
Julie, can you hear me?
I can.
I'm curious, there was a, a note in the minutes about the matching grant being due on July first, but finance committee minutes showed June first. Could you clarify the deadline for that?
Absolutely. Thank you. Great question. The deadline is June first. And we are, yeah, June first, and we're actively, of course, working towards that deadline. Everybody is aware of it and certainly becomes the sense of urgency to make sure that that window is not missed. So June first is the deadline.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Any, any other questions?
Julie, this is Jim, uh, offline. Could you, uh, give me a call? I, I can get a word into Tony. If, if.
Yeah. Absolutely. That would be great, Jim. Please know we do have a rep on the ground. Um, also Chelsea's working it from the back end. That just helped jog my memory. We just finished, thank you Chelsea, on our team, cutting a video with twenty-two pro skaters giving us shout outs directly to Cambria and Skate Cambria. That video will be included in this grant application and there is no way they can't look at that video and recognize their own industry. But Jim, that is super helpful and I will make sure to call. Thank you. Any other questions?
Julie, I'll get in touch with you later.
Okay, so, yeah, I love that you guys are reaching out. I love hearing from you. And so that's everything on the skate park. But Steve, do you want me to touch on just a second with ad hoc recs? So since I won't be on the call, I know you've got Kermit. Okay. I'm just gonna summarize. I'm sorry if I'm talking fast. I know that there'll be more fluid conversation on this. Um, obviously with ad hoc rec, we have been working very diligently over the last couple months. Um, I'm on the committee as an elevated community member. We've been holding meetings at the Chamber of Commerce. We just did another one last Saturday. And we roughly have about three hundred signatures already collected. The group did make a decision that we felt like we had enough in garnished signatures at this point. Um, and the signatures are simply based on recommendation support to three viable projects. And those are low impact, potentially financially feasible uh, projects that we're considering. Keyword recommendation, keyword considering. A frisbee golf course, multi-use trails and an exercise circuit. We've had some wonderful community comments come to our email that was set up, which is, uh, Get Outdoors, AdHocRec@gmail.com. All of those comments were read at the last meeting. And it was super helpful because we had sixteen people show up. Sixteen. And I mean, that is such a great number. We know this, uh, when it comes to outreach and community meetings. So we were super, super excited to see some new faces. Our next meeting is April first. We have tasked the group with three different committees and Kermit can expand on that. And those three committees will be presenting, uh, on rough ideas of costs. Again, we're not getting into finite, this is getting rough idea of costs on these projects and doing presentations on each one of them. So we welcome the public on April first, nine o'clock at the Chamber of Commerce office to join us and learn more. Does that help? Kermit, I'm gonna just kind of call on you. I know you'll go deeper and of course Steve. And I don't know who might be in the audience because I can't see, but I feel like Shannon might be sitting out there.
Yes, Shannon is standing out there.
I'm here also, Julie, Terry.
Oh, outstanding. Okay. Well, there's more than capable voices to expand on that. I just wanted to say thank you for being part of it. I think we're making tremendous stride in being respectful to our public and listening. The other thing that came out of the meeting was making sure we're engaging the Spanish community. And I have reached out to some of our Spanish, um, uh, community leaders to be part of the April first meeting so that we can bring to the table the discussion of soccer and what that may mean on possibilities. Again, recommendations, considerations, possibilities. It's all fluid conversation right now. I hope that helps.
Julie, thank you. Any questions for Julie? We gotta let her go. All right, get out of here. Go do your next duty.
All right. Thank you so much. And Joyce and Jim, um, offline, let me get some answers for you on any questions. And Kitty, I, I can't thank you enough. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Julie.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us into the chair report. Don't have a chair report. That takes us into community, committee, member communications. Can we, uh, let's finish out the conversation on, uh, the ad hoc committee. If we want to know, then I can bring you up to the floor.
Okay, and I'll deal some time right now. Shannon, you wanna, uh, I have nothing, not much more except just summary of what, what we've done so far. Do you wanna?
I guess I can share what we shared.
Shannon has been tasked with basically leading the committee that's looking at the exercise circuit.
Um, and I actually am doing that right now. I've been spending every morning looking for a company to help us. Finding plans for something that's environmentally low impact visually, um, is a little more difficult than metal. Um, so kind of doing that. And it's kind of as a general comment about the ad hoc committee and collecting those signatures. Um, it was very interesting, you know, the majority of people came to Farmer's Market, we're all local. Um, but we did ask them if they used our trails and, and we're outside, you know, wanting different ideas for recreation and they're, people are very into it. Um, younger people were overwhelmingly easier to get signatures from and the org community was a little bit if Kermit here, he was, would take the extra step of, of talking him through everything that we were, were, uh, proposing. Um, it was a very interesting, uh, a very interesting exercise and, you know, we kind of couch this more of a town meeting. So it was us getting outside to talk, get signatures, get input. And I think too, the other thing that kind of came out of it, and I don't think any of us are very surprised about this, is keeping the environment more natural as opposed to, um, you know, more concrete and metal. I don't think we're very surprised on that. I'm surprised.
So, uh, the exercise circuit that we're looking at would have a more of a low visual impact?
Correct. Okay. More wood, um, definitely matched the, uh, environment as opposed to it being, you know, colorful metal structures.
Right.
Rocks. We keep saying rocks.
Rocks.
Okay. Rock and wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, are, are you, um, I assume you're looking at the ranch names, your plan for seeders things are allowed and not allowed on the ranch? There's guidelines of visual.
Yeah, we're in, everything we're proposing is aligned with master plan. And I'm working with Kermit, who is also defining, has already worked on the trail system to, uh, identify the areas where the circuits could go.
What, what do you mean by master plan?
The master.
You're just direct east-west ranch public access, regional name.
The management.
And I, and just where, uh, I have never found it, maybe you can clarify for it. If I, or, uh, Carlos said there wouldn't be anything, you know, the planted bushes down there on, on the east branch, the, the clump was, uh, well, growth at the end for the, okay, he said there wasn't supposed to be anything that passed there, but we actually said, so. And could you explain that a little bit more?
Oh, the, the area that was delineated to the community park?
Yeah.
Was, you know, it's like a hundred and thirty acres. So.
It's, it's between those bushes and the other.
And the parking lot and the end of the parking lot.
All right.
Um, so we.
I show them on a, a plan as being one or two presentations there.
Yeah, I think that I, there may be a map. I have the printed copy.
Well, I haven't got it. I didn't see it.
I don't remember.
Again, a little bit later because I'm curious where that paragraph is, says.
Oh, I, I would do a text search.
I'm sorry. With Kitty's position that we were told that, that, that anything beyond that even doing DG trails down past the bushes was not necessarily within the scope.
Right, yeah, I think they delineated a quite large area.
Yeah. So my question is, would, is, do you see there being a problem with these stations within the hundred and thirty acres?
But I, I would have to look again because they do say you can't use anything reflective. You can't use anything that you can see when you're not on the right next one, really, which would be very hard to play golf if you can't see. If you can't see the holes, but maybe you can have temporary blind or something. I'm not sure. I'd have to look at it because I don't, I've never looked at that line.
I would like to see that because, uh, some of this stuff, community park car down there, you know, they put a
Same thing with the dog.
Frisbee golf course.
Well, there's a fence around the dog park too, right? So obviously.
Well, do you think there's gonna be a problem with the, the frisbee golf?
I don't know. I, I am hesitant about that. I actually am, but, um, Carlos has a very good handle on this.
Yeah, I would, well, I'd like to read it. We keep hearing, like, it says this, it says that. I want to see it.
Well, it's all, the whole
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Plan is on the CCSD website.
I got it. I got it. I haven't seen what everyone's saying.
Oh, it is under the aesthetics. It's also in the, uh, the EIR also guys, which things, but the EIR is.
Isn't there probably flood plain issues on the, the further west side of the east side of the ranch?
Close to the highway.
Be swampy area anyways. It doesn't make sense to go out that direction very far.
I have to say, I've read all these things, but only with an eye towards the things that we were interested in doing. So I don't really, I haven't really read them with that.
I appreciate a little more direction if you see something there that, or especially like the exercise circuit. But if, everything I've read is, was based on the appearance of a community park. And exercise circuits are certainly.
Because then wouldn't a picnic table be against it?
No, no, there's, there's supposed to be a community park there.
Yes.
But there are aesthetic guidelines. You know, like no lights.
There were several discussions about what was going to be allowed. And they had a lot of people submit things. There were certain things that were not accepted, samples, swimming pools, tennis court.
Here's a list of it right here. I got, I got that.
I believe that as far as the community park is concerned, it's a recreational activity. But there is a boundary between community park and the issue of western. The question is also, is the boundary on the east side of the highway or the west?
Oh, well, onto the east of it, like, like, like.
Here's, here's what I have. Besides the proof of use, it says be improvements. All physical improvements will be limited to those specified by the plan and per the design specifications and locations here in, in mineral trails, incidental improvements and ranch should be cited and designed to protect tech views to along the coast of the city areas. Views will be also considered from offsite, private property development feasible. If necessary improvements will screen and remove by vegetation, solid fencing. Views from highway ones in California, city highway, if it's possible future, federal American, uh, road, city bypass should be protected. No other structures of directional information signs be installed on the ranch along the highway border. So that's, I've never seen anything much more restricted than that.
Oh, I have.
Okay, I'd like to see it.
Because we're doing the boardwalk. I absolutely looked at all that. But I'm not saying it will impact this. And besides, the, the management plan is largely for the west ranch, the natural areas. And it says, I, if my memory serves, that at some point they need a management plan for the community park, which has not been written, which is another extension of sign and all of that, which, um, I hope you enjoy.
Well, they, would, would, would you have, would you have time? Do you have office hours or something where it's, we can stop by and we can be Googling and we could, or, you know, doing.
Oh, yeah, let's set up an appointment. Yeah. I can't look at my computer right now.
Let me know, no.
I'm on my computer if I was.
See, see what you.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we don't want to expend people's energy on a project that we're not going to build.
Well, or design in a direction that's not gonna work. But I think, I, 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 it's meant to have a community park. And community parks have metal structures.
Yeah, and there was not supposed to be anything for, I mean, these are all things that I remember because I'm trying to build a, a baseball field there. So I want stadium and I want a backstop. And they said, you can't have any of that. Can't pour concrete on the ranch. So I'm gonna have to roll out my backstop. I'm gonna have to bring in, uh, not sent, you know, portable stands. Okay, that would all work. So that was kind of my understanding at the time is can't pour concrete. And then, and then it didn't matter. We're like, all right, anything is good. But now are we really saying we cannot dig a hole on the east branch in that area and put a post to hold the, the frisbee thing?
But there's, there's posts underneath the fence around the dog park. And when we build the boardwalk, you have to put foundations on it.
So you do pour concrete down there?
You can't see the. It's about aesthetics.
Okay.
Yes. So I did look at it a long time ago and I was aware that we were staying in the unbiased before the big bush area, which I love. It's all the funny little there. And the idea that I was working with in my head and, and definitely going to be running by Kermit once I had solidified it was more on the outskirts. So it's tucked into vegetation as much as we possibly can. So it's not super apparent. And only six to eight stations.
Right. Can we get Carlos to put some stakes at the boundary of the park? Between the, uh, west ranch and the community park, just so we know what that boundary is, pockets.
Or draw, draw a plan, just draw lines.
If I was Carlos, I would say, no, don't make me do that. Go online, get the plan, look at it.
Visuals. You have a.
Yeah. Okay. Why don't we make this a major issue for the next meeting? As the topic of the whole thing, it was just a flesh out. Wouldn't this look at the strengths of this?
What?
We're all interested in that issue. We all talked about it. Maybe needing to be very slick, we come back through the same presentation. Why don't we just try to narrow it down next meeting with our definitive paragraphs so we can find out where, what it is we're doing.
Yeah. So identifying the confines.
Yes. Because that's a big issue. That's what we've been fighting this elusive, uh, what's protected, what is, things are, what isn't.
I'm pretty sure it's.
We need to find it on the paper. And, and instead of chatting about what you think it is.
I'm pretty sure CCSD has the old community park plan on, online and that has the boundaries. It's within the boundaries of where you're at.
Well, I have that one. I'll look at that.
Yeah, that's the.
When we make it part of our meeting next year or next month, next year, or next month. I'll bring the plan that I have, um, was played out of both stuff. And when we find what else is in this plan that is, is to modify anything we do. I think we're well within, I mean, I maybe missed something.
No, it's good to be sure. That's the only, my only point is make sure that you aren't spending a lot of time on going in a direction we won't be able to implement.
Right. And I mean, you mentioned questions like no metal, is it the case that there's no metal or no reflective metal? Because you can powder coat it black or, you know, sort of dark brown, that is. Yeah, that'd be, it makes a big difference in the size. That probably has to be some in, in structure. So if there is now east west, I mean, east ranch plan.
It's partially covered by this plan. But the community park, it says in there that the community park needs its own management plan, but this covers the whole branch.
So that's the.
It's a little ambiguous. So we set it up.
Is that something that this group would be tasked with creating?
It might be a great upgrade.
Well, what, if I may be so bold, is that we have known that we're getting beyond our capacity as a parts and recreation department that doesn't exist. And the more we keep doing, we're gonna have to come to grips with it. And we kind of knew that if we build a, a field, we're gonna really have to get a maintenance department. Yeah. And we haven't done that. So we kind of pushed that decision off. And what you're getting at is, yeah, we need to really figure out what, what it is. What is the management plan for this particular area now that it's functioning? Right? If I want to rent the, um, the frisbee golf course, how do I do that? Go to Carlos. Carlos be like, ah, more. So anyway, yeah, we're here, which is good. I wanted to be here. It's been a long journey for us to get here, but we're coming to here. So I do think it is us.
Well, can I throw my name in the rain to help when we get to those points? Is that, I don't know how this works.
Yeah, we, I.
I was just ashamed of how it's organized. It's a little.
Well, it's an advisory thing and what we really need, if I may be so bold, there is, we need a parks, you know, a, a wrecked park, you know, which with our funding the way it is, it's probably a long shot too.
Kermit, we're on, we're on, we're on this ad hoc committee. We can definitely invite her. Doesn't have to be a published thing. And I think we need to get together before next month and, and cover this issue.
All right. Well, that would, that would be fine.
And we're trying to.
It, but that's actually one of our goals to the next issue is the issue, the things to carry forward on the agenda, but on the agenda for discussing. When, when we want to meet.
I don't know. Before next month.
What I have written down is identify the confines. That's gonna be the agenda topic for next time or we're gonna discuss that and they're gonna come back with information on that. And we don't need a date on that. You guys can work on that later.
We're, uh, scheduled.
Yeah, at least I'd like to get Kitty. And get Kitty in that conversation too.
Next Tuesday, uh, ten o'clock.
I don't have my calendar.
Let's, let's all, let's, let's head to that and suggest.
Well, next Tuesday I have a board meeting, so.
That's not a good day.
That's, yeah.
Steve, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that we did bring this up at the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I remember attending the pros meeting back in September of twenty ten. And the, um, district had hired a landscape architect to come up with a plan for the East Ranch. And he had these extensive drawings about what's going to be optioned. They paid him thirty-five thousand dollars, this is in twenty-ten. And it was gonna be a baseball field, softball, much more extensive than the minimal plans that we have right now. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that that plan still exists somewhere, uh, in the archives or wherever with the CCSD. Uh, with regard to the signatures that we create, that we collected at the farmer's market. Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, that Shannon was saying it was mostly people from out of town. Uh, I'd say with regard to folks that I spoke with, it's probably half and half. Uh, maybe a little bit more locals, but that could be because maybe, and this is no reflection on Kermit or Shannon, but I'm, we know well-known. So people who are kind of gravitated to the, that guard. But I do want to say that the sport for frisbee golf came from young people and mostly from people that don't live in the area. Uh, but it's, uh, you know, it is the second fastest growing sport in the country after pickleball. And, um, but I have heard from people that, well, do we really want more tourists coming to Cambria? You know, to play frisbee golf. So it's, um, it's kind of a touch and go situation with regard to, do we really want to do that? Uh, personally, I feel like it wouldn't be a bad idea at Frisky Golf Outlet because it's a popular sport. Um, I, so I just wanted to mention that. And I think most people that I talked to were in favor of any type of recreation, especially what we were presenting out there on East Ranch, whether they were locals, including the locals of all ages and people that were visiting as well.
Jerry?
Uh, one of the things that I've been reading in Julie's notes is that the people that you talk to at the farmer's market who are actually residents want to keep it more natural and keep it as natural as they can. And, um, that's the general feeling I'm getting from reading the notes. Um, I, out of town people, you know, they probably have different thoughts, but, uh, I'd just like to reemphasize that when I read Julie's notes, the people that are residents want to keep it more natural.
Well, I would, I would say this, and you know, I'm, I'm among that group that if it were up to me, um, the dog park and the parking lot wouldn't even be there. But they're there now and we've already had to have a restroom because we have a dog park. So the unfortunate situation is whether we'd like to keep it as totally natural as possible. You know, that, what is that? That horse has left the barn, so to speak. Um, I totally agree. I mean, I made the comment to me, I just wish that nice old house and all the youth industries were so out of Unfortunately, that's gone as well. So, um, I understand with regard to, let's make it as low impact and natural as possible. I'm in total agreement with that. Uh, but I just wanted to put out there, uh, the kind of feedback that we're getting. And I'm glad that you just brought that up as well. There are people who might be, that remain what it is.
Perfect, Amy.
Who's played this golf? I ask. Anybody else here played? Sure. It's, I mean, you've probably played in the field and, uh, slow at the park. And I would, when we talk about residents would like to keep it totally natural. I mean, I think that's a common denominator. People are pretty happy with that. It's, but, but this golf doesn't, it's not a huge foot, doesn't have anything. So I mean, the same as the exercise circuit site, I want to be clear that we're not, it's not an either or. I mean, these are both very low impact on the action trails that are hardly visible, in my opinion. And this golf sounds like perhaps a.
And this golf sounds like perhaps a maybe when we look at the costs and that's what we'll hear next month, that uh, maybe we don't have some of the issues we would with the exercise circuit, but it may be the low hanging fruit possibly and whether, you know, it's appealing to visitors, which some of us rely upon for our incomes here. Um, or not, and some locals, it's, it's quite popular, like you said, Harry.
I was just. During those discussions, it sounds to me that you have Frisbee Golf and you have just one course, you're gonna have to have some kind of a schedule, I suppose, reservation time.
We're just wondering, it's not like real golf.
People just wait.
Starting to sound like you were gonna have to observe.
No, no, that whole thing about renting it, that was a joke.
Okay. That was kind of.
Wait, can we make revenue on that? I do, but not well.
Okay, any other questions or any other discussion on that? We're still moving forward.
I just have one question. So um, I know, you know, who in here is in support of what we are presenting. But are, like, in general, the pros committee, are you in support of us um, presenting something for the space?
Oh, yeah, that's kind of our, that's our charge.
Because I don't, I don't think that, like, if we do this work and we get here and it's like, nope, we don't want anything, um, which is very Cambrian.
Yeah, I guess if you need support, I'm leading the charge on stuff on East Ranch. I would, my, I would make a position against Harry's position and against the nose, I'm not gonna, because I don't think I have to, I don't want to demean other people's position, but that's my charge, is I'm putting stuff out there, we're gonna play. At some point, I'm gonna have a place structure out there for my grandkids to go down and play on. And that'll probably be a fight at that time too, but it's a, it's a spark. It's where we're supposed to play, the western ranch is for walking around, the east ranch is for playing.
And it's in the plan, I mean, there, there is a plan and it's in the plan.
Yeah, so. How about uh, St. Patty's Day, the fourteenth, it's a Wednesday?
Seventeenth.
What is?
Yeah, that's Friday.
Oh, no, no, the fifteenth.
No, I know, Harry, you have been nothing but supportive of this, and that's why we know that this is a good project. Because Harry Farmer has gone on for it, right? He's a Panera. Well, that's my feeling, listen, Harry's into it, if you're against it, I, I'm like, come on. I just, this has been a guy that's been on that position for a long time and he sees the reality of it and he's acquiescing to it, I mean, that's just.
Let me just say this much, the idea of people out there enjoying the East Ranch with low impact uh, opportunities on a lovely day, whether they live here or they're visiting, people enjoying themselves. Uh, I just want people that show up there to be responsible and how they be while they're there, no trash, you know, as little trash as possible and people being friendly to one another. And that's kind of, I guess I'm an idealist, that's what I'm hoping. My main concern, to be perfectly honest with you, is the entrance and exit to that area of Rodeo Grounds Road. That has always been a concern of mine, we've got people coming down Burton Drive, they're gonna make a left to come into uh, the the East Ranch while people are coming up Burton Drive to go across the bridge and make a left going up. My main concern is the potential for auto accidents if all of a sudden, oh, there's a lot of people going in that area. But uh, that's, that's what it is.
I understand that NCAC is addressing that road as far as getting it paid.
They are, I hope so, because I know that the, the crew, CCSD is also extremely concerned about that, having to go in and out all the time. Um, and it is a just a mess, an absolute mess. And I'm hoping that this committee, other committees put pressure on the county to, to which probably be burnt and left, which is bad.
But I'm the one that's pushed that to the NCAC, so the, the supervisor, uh, gets, yes, Bruce, uh, has said, yes, it is a county road, he looked it up all night, it is, and they agreed, so you'll look at it again. But it was, we did not push on the intersection. It should be signed, it's weakly signed and it uh, it has a dog mark on one side on it. So we probably ought to pay attention to uh, inner traffic coming in, something that that is a warning sign, let's say a hate sign, but there is a good intersection location for a plate, a sign to go, if you push away the cookie signs and stuff like that. Could indicate there's a little more going on than just nothing. And I think you're right, I'll bring that up, yeah, next up, we don't have a traffic committee, it's like it used to have, so we'll bring it up again. I'm sure he will make a statement, but I will, I will, I can't bring that up, the intersection needs study or hand sign.
Actually, a question for Joyce. During our discussions in the early days about what was compatible with the park, I thought that the county had basically put a small amount of money toward and also there was the bit about the, the uh, Escher side of the ranch, the west side of the ranch, that's what you do. But on the east side, as far as community park was concerned, it was supposed to be active recreation. So there is kind of a history of the county actually wanting the community park.
Yeah.
And they did, but it's a small.
A hundred million dollars.
And we never really saw that much.
Yeah, it, it really helped conclude the buying of the ranch, what the county gave really helped. But they said, we would like that to go to, you know, a community park.
And I don't remember the county requiring noise studies.
You know, the environmental impact report that was done for the ranch and the management plan both include the community park.
Yeah.
The community park is not a new idea by anyone's, and it's had extensive public input, like Harry said.
Lots of input.
Lots of public meetings and, so, you know, with hundred, you know, hundred people there.
You should do it again.
They're very expensive.
It was like, there is a plan.
Yeah.
That's what we'll, we'll dig up on the Wednesday, Wednesday, to make sure and see if we can find perfect things to guide us in those. Where were?
Yeah, yeah, Kitty's available on Wednesday, the fourteenth, uh, at ten o'clock at her office, or if she can't, she'll come up with a, a better.
If I, I volunteer my house, too.
Okay, perfect, can we be done with that one? All right, we're good. Shannon, you can hang out if you want. Yeah, uh, we're gonna, we're still on committee member reports, we haven't got off that. And Kermit, I'm gonna address your public comment during the committee member reports. And Kermit has uh, written a public comment on, he wants to know why the commissioners have six commissioners instead of five by the by law. Kermit, what is your point here?
So I was just trying to figure out why we had six commissioners instead of five. Terry Lord never disappeared off the roster and issues belong, and so they said, they took her off.
Yeah.
That's apparently all it was, but I thought she had another. So we both disappeared, she was February thirteenth and I was November. So they, they just finished.
So you're comfortable with that?
Comfortable with that, okay, my major purpose in bringing this up, it's public comment, I think, but I found out, I didn't realize until I this Stan whatever wrote me on the road, or I got that handed, I, I got that, I sent it back to him, but that's a pretty slick system and that was kind of, I wanted to test it, let's see if it showed up again. Because frankly, that's a good way, we don't expect people to trot down, they can always make notes on that. But I was also concerned is the response is Haley sends them out to whoever, it's, it's lost out there. I had mailed the guy back on my uh, home email, uh, which I thought was, was kind of, you know, that's one step from spam. We don't have an official response package and I, I think it's not a bad system to utilize for us to, you know, once in a while advertise uh, about, you know, if you have comments about recreation, send them to here or whatever, or if rather than have them show up here. But the, the response back is kind of shaky. And I, I just was wondering if we're gonna, if we utilize this more. But we end up with our email going there, well, our, our email's spam material too. And most people don't answer, don't look in this folder, so is there a better method that we could utilize as our official correspondence through the CCSD uh, uh, package on this thing, because I didn't, I didn't know we had a way to communicate with the public, but that's a, a path that saves them coming down here once a month, if, if they can remember what data is. So how would we flesh that out a little bit better?
I, I can, I'm making note on the finance committee, it came up, we had a public comment via the, the on, online comment form. And I asked Tom Gray how, what the official reply was, and he said there wasn't really that he would reply to that one specifically. And I think the CCSD members, Harry, you have a CCSD email, right? So when you communicate with the public, you can use your CCSD emails, so Tom, Tom would have that also. But we don't, is your point, you don't have a way to provide people formally without our personal emails.
And they have all four committees, it was check part that they, that hurt that comment to go to. So comes to a pros, since we all have a pros reply back on the official city mails that documents require. Could we just have, I hate to say, Steve, have a email that's attached to the pros for the secretary? So that at least somebody checks it.
That would be fine with me. I really wanna go home, and so I really don't wanna talk about this because I don't understand what you're talking about. But then as I start grinding away at it, I'm like, I see a confluence of social media and government coming together where they don't know what's going on. Meaning this, I cannot respond to a question because I do not respond for the pros committee. The pros committee responds as a committee together when we take action and we vote on something at the meeting. So I can't really respond, we're not even supposed to respond to public comment when it comes to us, the board is supposed to, right? That's just kind of these things we do because we're a small community and we kind of let that stuff flow. So um, for somebody to say, hey, I wrote a letter to the pros commission, I need a response, well, the response has got to come at the meeting.
Well, but it's, I mean, it could be a simple acknowledgement, thank you, we received.
Which I think would be, would be staff.
I, I know.
Is, is saying what, that we got your letter or?
No, that there's nothing, it goes to the void, you don't know if you really did. What, I volunteer to follow up on that, has it, that takes, because it affects many of our committees and maybe it's as simple as having an automatic reply via the form. Well, we had Julie just for this, this ad hoc setup Gmail, you know, which seems just kind of bizarre, because it's not an official record of the ad hoc. It's extra work and it's not very formal.
Ayo.
It's going to the past. I can remember maybe three projects. The people who wanted to submit vote and to us. Uh, there were a couple others, uh, there was the pickleball, I believe, also did the same thing. Before us asked about pickleball, except. And uh, and they kind of resolved it in a different way, they actually got out to the public, uh, money, it's grounds. Yeah, but they, we were, basically we're listening to what their ideas and what we could start. Uh, as far as the committee was concerned, and all those three projects that I'll remember, uh, the community itself picked up the ball and got the money and got it done and we didn't interfere with any of that. So I don't know why this is going to be different.
Well, the, the, it's the fact that what we're trying to do is make a for small potatoes, not assuming, well, just an average person talking about a road that we reply and some man enters says, yeah, we impressed it and here's what resolution was. I, I sent the note back saying, yeah, we brought it up to the, through the NACA and Supervisor Gibson said he would act on it and the guy was happy to hear from him. And I uh, put that, and that's my point, is we don't have a response. And the thing about, yes, we got your emails one way, but the other one, some of them require an answer. If we, if we have an answer or we kick it somewhere else, then honestly, there, I would think it would be Haley that would do it. But Haley wasn't having any part of that, so she kicked it up to uh, uh, what's the name, the administrator, acting administrator? Yeah, yeah, and then he kicked it back to me and, you know, then, and I did it. So we ought to find who is the official responder. If, if we give them the answer, it should have been Haley made it without under the pros or under the, the CCSD banner.
Actually, we can't really give a, a response, we can say we acknowledged your letter that it came or whatever. But because the response has to be on our agenda and then we can make a response. But if it's not on the agenda, we are not allowed to respond.
If it's not in our purview to begin with, yeah, then we're kicking it, I mean, if we kick it, that's a response. Because then our, it's not pros purview, I afford it to be appropriate personally.
I mean. So we've got a lady that's making a comment, there was some public comment about water meters.
Right.
So are we gonna respond to her?
Probably should, probably should, we don't do water meters. And I don't, and that's the, that, but that should be brought up to the public works department, just kicked over to them. You know, our internal response and frankly, that one should be rejected and sent on, sent to Haley to send on to.
Actually, it went to several committees, it didn't just come here, it went to many.
Haley should be wise enough to be able to say that if not, thank you very much, but but there's only, only one person that's involved in that.
And she, does she get it first, do we note and order it or does it come from the street? She, she probably is directing it.
She directs it to somewhere else, she, she, she's got enough on her plate, she doesn't. She is just acting as a forward. You guys take care of this and if it comes back, then she'll order it to the other place, but she's not gonna answer it. Uh, because she probably got too much to do, full plate, so to speak, uh, but um, so I don't. I guess, shall we toss this to Harry at this point? No, you're gonna do it.
I'll.
Have to get on German, I just think that is. Thank you.
And it does affect other committees as well, and whether it's appropriate to require it or not, I agree with you in general that it is, but maybe not, maybe it's just the case of wars.
Yeah, okay, uh, Kermit, you're comfortable, we're gonna move out of the committee member communication and take us into ex officio report. I got public number three.
They're not.
Oh, I, I was trying to go back in the.
There are no hands raised yet?
Yeah.
Good. No, right, I've got ex officio, we've already had the skate, or we already had the skate park, uh, Kitty, that's you, what do you got for us?
Okay. Um, weird to be here in person.
Should I, should I quote you?
No, don't put that, no, no. So uh, let me fill you in on some work that's been going on the ranch. And since February first, I do believe there are two hours of labor has been reported directly on ranch work. Mind you, they always underreport that, of course, volunteers. So erosion control on the forest trails has been a major area for us. Um, since Carlos isn't here, like, you know, about a hundred trees have come down. Um, all the hazardous trees have been cut and removed. Um, including some beautifully removed around the butterfly growth. But erosion control on the forest trails because of all this rain and along the uh, fire road. We had a group from AmeriCorps volunteers who came and worked on the trees around the dog park. They did a weeding which we've so far uh, done on an annual basis, which might be not enough, but that's how much labor we've, we've put into weeding the dog park trees, but they did mulch them, so they're in better shape. Um, they also staked our new trees that we planted last fall because uh, the winds have been so strong, a lot of them were, even the little ones were the neebber. So they put little wooden stakes with cotton string so that it can decay out there. Uh, but the trees are doing, most of the trees are doing well. Laughing Well students have been out pulling ice plant, they have service hours they need to do, so they did some ice plant pulling. Seemed to have a good time uh, when I saw them. We've, in education, we uh, put in ninety. We've, in education, we uh, put in ninety hours volunteers since February first. Laughing Well students came out and had a field trip, about twelve of them. Two buses of fourth graders from Fresno came out. Yes, Fresno fourth graders. Got to see the ocean for the first time largely. I am not sure how many students it was. Probably eighty would be my guess, seventy to eighty students. But we also had a high school from Colorado come out. Uh, their egg teacher, yeah, Colorado, the egg teacher organized this fantastic field trip where they went to Bakersfield and went to the international egg expo, which they reported was very, very ill. To me, they were. And then they went around, they saw the open seals, they came to the ranch, many of them. Saw the ocean for the first time and were ready to move to California until we got downwind of the poop rocks in Otter Cove. And then they rethought it, which I thought was pretty significant for farm kids to think that that was bad. There were about fifty of them. We had, we're going back to two to four dozen walks a month. In outreach, we put in a hundred and three hours. We had a pop up on February eighteenth. Our next pop up will be April twenty second, which is Earth Day. An event that's being coordinated by the new space at the pocket park by the, um. No, not the pocket park, the um, Creekside Reserve. At the Creekside Reserve. So they're organizing a big festival for Earth Day, like in the old days. When people got together in the same place. So this is very exciting. We're actually be able to do that. Also, we're gonna have the wildflower show. So yay, we're gonna have the wildflower show in three years. So that's the, Earth Day is April twenty second. Wildflower show is like twenty ninth to thirty one, right here. Yep. And we also have dozens in the office. So we always have dozens in the office on Thursday, Friday and Saturday from eleven to two. Um, and they interact lots of, of visitors from out of town. We, as for the Lincoln Boardwalk, we've done some, we did some experimental drilling. I don't know the results yet to see how big a footings, well, to see how small footings we could get away with. The county has pre-approved significantly large footings because that's pre-approved ones are for unstable clay soils. So we're hoping that by drilling and finding out what the soils are, we'll be able to do smaller footings. Really wanna minimize the excavation and any type of factor. And dealing with sediment or any, any, actually minimize everything. As well as foster. It's the drill instead digging generally.
Would that have, if they had large footings, that would have a, a real visual impact?
No, it's a, you wouldn't see it.
You wouldn't see it. It would be underground.
Yeah, they're all gonna be buried. Whatever footings they are, they're gonna be buried. It'll look just like the existing boardwalk, which has footings under it as well. I naively thought they had those concrete gogs that just sat on the surface. No. Concrete underneath.
Yeah.
Okay.
And are they replacing those? No. This is the new.
No, this is the new board. Presumably, even when the boardwalk needs to be replaced, those footings are still. Probably, yeah. And our board meeting is March fourteenth by Zoom. And that's my report.
Awesome. Thank you, Kitty. Any questions for Kitty? Boom. Nice work. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitty, thanks for all the greatery on the ranch.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, we arranged to have some rain. We may have gone a little overboard. But, you know, we've been asking for it for every year, but they're all delivering this.
Supposedly we're getting more on Friday.
Inches, inches more on Friday. Yeah, like three or four. Yeah. So expect trails to be closed again.
Again, yeah.
Yeah, Carlos and his group have been really, really good about getting those back open quickly. But um, when it's high winds, it's really good idea to stay out of the forest.
Awesome. Thank you, Kitty. All right, that takes us on to public comment and on the agenda. Do I have any in the audience? You do not. Okay, seeing that, I've got a couple here from uh, that I'm gonna read. Linda Prentiss says, please consider allowing fifty water meter holders to build each year for two years to test the effect on water's price. Thank you. Kermit, you wanna touch on that?
No, I don't.
Comments to our head hair. Linda Prentis says the, since the exact same uh, public comment to the policy committee. Yeah, I see that it's been, yeah, thank you very much. All right, I'm in agreement. Uh, Kermit's got his. All right, we have this other one here uh, from um, uh, Holly Ludwigson, right, who I believe we know. So uh, she's making this point. I'm gonna read it. I would like to request the acting general manager to renew the existing social media policy. Approved on nine sixteen twenty one. With members of all standing committees, the social media policy outlines approved guidelines regarding commenting and posting on social media sites about CCSB business by district employees, district officials, as well as consultant contractors performing work on behalf of the district as stated in the policy's purpose. I feel a formal and annual review of the existing social media policy with members of standing committees is warranted based on posts and comments containing misinformation and unsupported allegations that show up on Nextdoor and local Facebook site by some standing committee members. Two examples come to mind. Misinformation by a finance committee member about components of the most recent Prop two eighteen and the recent accusations by a policy committee member that a CCSB is influencing community members' trash bin choices in order for CCSB to benefit financially. In the interest of the CCSB board's transparency and greater commit, community involvement, I cannot understand how standing committee members incorrect social media posts, comments could be anything but harmful to community members' understanding of current CCSB concerns and projects. Besides being in violation of the CCSB policy on social media communications. I recognize how tantalizing it is to speak from an official position, having insider information, but sharing misunderstood prejudice and incorrect information on social media sites is dangerous. Since the current and improved CCSB social media policy appears to be consistently observed by board members, but not all committee members, an annual review of the policy with committee members could be beneficial. Thank you. Holly Ludwigson, homeowner, small business owner, full-time Cambria resident. Well, thank you. Steve, I also wanna mention that uh, this is what you requested. Yeah, and if I, yeah, if I may be so bold, is that not kind of what we were just touching on?
Well, it, it, the, I was talking about the mechanism for messaging. But I was going to ask that, listening to that, I didn't know if there was. But I'm going to violate it probably by having a very small article published in the Cambria, Cambria that, the, the projects that were approved proposed that follows up on this ad hoc committee. This situation. So I'm, I'm going to step out as a, uh, as just a, a member of, or I don't have, you know, pros commissioner of my, as my title. But I am obviously who I am and making comment on this. So somebody would tell, tell me very quick, because I was gonna make a series of things, like explaining what frithy golf was. The general cost and that the trails are proposed for greater understanding. So people don't realize that when you say accessible, it's, I don't want, we have charts all. So, you know, we have, that's the kind of stuff we, we do. And so tell me if I'm wrong in doing it.
I do. My suggestion is you don't. Julie Amade, my girl too, she's not a commissioner. She's a hot, she must be information now. So she's more of, I'm, I'm just saying, she's more independent. So she's not speaking officially other than to put a response on what's going on.
And uh, the finance committee has moved to have that to the agenda for next month. And so I recommend perhaps we piggyback on a review of the existing policy because it seems really reasonable potentially that we follow it. And I don't know what it is exactly, uh, myself. So if, if the group agrees, we could add that to our agenda for this, for uh, reviews next time. And then we would all know better what's recommended.
I don't know if that's under the purview of you folks, but since it's a policy, it probably needs to be discussed in the policy. And see if it needs to be taken further to the board.
But it's a policy that covers this committee and the committee doesn't know the policy.
It's already an existing policy.
They're not trying to change it. They just wanna.
Training.
So Kermit, I would say, number one, we live in America. You can write whatever you want. Say, I'm an individual and I'm writing, this is my knowledge. So you can get away with that. Don't, and can't we also say, hey, Kermit, as a board, we could say, write the letter and then we endorse your letter. We're not saying this is policy. All we're saying is we're endorsing Kermit's explanation of what's going on, right?
Yeah, because essentially, what's the difference between me writing it and saying it in a parking lot?
So I'm, I'm on the editorial board of the Cambria Club.
Yeah.
Um, the, the authors are not citizens. They are representing organizations. So you cannot write as a private person.
Oh.
Um, you are representing an organization when you are an author in that publication. So there's no, no risk. Yeah, no, Julie couldn't do it as a private citizen. She would be representing, so and I don't know the, I don't know the social media.
She works for, that she lays out the things, so she's sort of a semi-employed.
Yeah, but she still can't write on her own.
She didn't wanna write.
Julie drafting something and sending it to us for approval to.
I think, I think if it goes in the Cambria Club, I would try to get John to put it under recreation, not document.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, just as a start. But I have not seen or heard or read the social media policy. So I have no idea whether this would be a violation or not. We should review it before.
I would rather get in trouble for it rather than do nothing. Cause for us, we'll prove it. We're once a month. Unless you guys.
Yeah, I, I don't have trouble endorsing Kermit writing in our oath of goal to inform the community on what we're doing.
Say again?
Let's see if I can.
And I'm not sure it's social media.
Yeah.
Exactly. I didn't see any.
There's no interaction. There's no.
Exactly. Yeah.
What isn't helping the public social media?
Social media has interactions. So like Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram, you can have conversations with people. You can't do that in Cambria.
It's not one way.
I wanna say, what Kermit just said, I'd rather get in trouble than do nothing. Yeah. It's so awesome. Good trouble.
Good trouble.
All right, so somebody make a motion for Kermit to do whatever he's doing. Is that all right? Do we need a motion?
I, I don't, I don't have to. I don't pick the lead.
Maybe not.
I'll just so much or, or not.
Okay.
If there's a problem later.
Okay.
She's sending you an article.
All right, so that's the public comment and we're gonna move on.
They can learn this too.
Facilities and resources supervisor Carlos isn't here. Does anybody wanna touch on anything that Carlos may be doing Kitty?
Carlos is doing a great job.
Yeah.
He's recovering from the vandalism.
Yeah.
Emotionally?
Well, emotionally and they're, I mean, one of their trucks is still a mess.
Yeah.
One of them has been repaired.
Yeah.
And the, the structure that was destroyed is a little tiny.
Is anybody emotionally distraught?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, didn't somebody steal a tr, a truck?
And they vandalized, yeah, they tried, and they tore down, they stole a trailer and they tore, uh, tore down a truck.
It was just one guy though, right?
One very strong guy. Yeah. And threw a two hundred and fifty pound piece of wood over their heads. Yeah. Pretty strong. Yeah. I don't know what happened. Yeah.
Hopefully.
I have a question about Carlos and uh, I've got, I put him down as a committee member uh, to be included for the golf, uh, we're, we're gonna get, we're doing cost estimates. And I had him down as part of the committee on each of those little things like the trails and the other thing, the exercise. They'll go, they'll go where they go, if they improve. The, so the question is, um, can I do that? I named him on, on the, the committee list for, for summary. But I, that's if somebody else is employed. And can we do this stuff on our own or do we work with CCSD on other two?
Put him on the committee.
I, yeah, I think that the, the general manager theoretically is the person that would, would allow contact between us and an employee. The director should not actually go in. The general manager is the one that.
So I just said.
Schedules their time, at least.
Okay, I'll send, I'll send him a note.
For Carlos, no.
To Ray. Just the same that you're suggesting that he's unfamiliar, so he knows about it. Because Carlos thinks it was the guy.
No, not awkward division.
Yeah. Building you're talking about.
Oh, it was an aluminum shade structure over the chipper?
It, it's uh, it's in Carlos.
In the facilities, sorry.
Yeah, well, that's kind of exciting.
We should be arming, arming our uh, water people. Was it, uh, all right, there you go. There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars down the drain.
Right. Insurance. Yeah.
What, who was in custody? I don't think they would let him go. He was in custody a couple days ago. I haven't checked lately.
It was on the front page of the Tribune.
Well, in the police station, apparently, if you go and look, you can see who's in custody. You check. Well, that's, which was nice to me, having not needed to do that before.
And I was, noticed I read this story and I said, and he went into one of the buildings. Now, you don't know where those costumes are. I should have worked there and been there.
But aren't they hanging in the closet? I've seen clothes in the castles.
It's, it's, I went into those costumes that are used to people who night trips and stuff. That's why I was able to check. So uh, I, I haven't heard the name. That's how it's turned.
If it was somebody, that's what I was gonna say, is it a local person? Do we know him or?
It's a moral.
And he was out of.
Judging by his police record, I doubt he was a employed person also. I talked to a person who was there at the time and she said, unfortunately, this was the first day for many of the docents. They had just finished their training. It was their first tour. So they're never gonna be faced by anything going forward.
And he didn't have pants on? Are we clear on that?
They are clear on that.
Sweet. Nice touch. Sometimes that makes you really strong.
It's getting crazy.
All right, that's it. We're calling, we're gonna give a motion to approve the minutes of last time.
Uh, uh, one note, the, in the minutes, the deadline for the grant was.
Noted that.
Yes, the date for the, so I will note that.
Eric, future also on page six with regard to the meeting on the fourteen. And it says regular meeting. It was actually a special.
Especially, yeah, okay. On future agenda items, could you play the next meeting or discussion of the uh, management plan? For the.
Yeah, I'm, I've got that written down. Identifying confines. Is that the same concept?
Yeah. How about the social media thing too? We wanna review the social media.
And I'll follow up with what's presented to finance committee.
Excellent. Yeah, more than us following up. We wanna be presented with what we're supposed to do kind of from then.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, uh, future agenda items. There we go. Anything else? Perfect. Motion to adjourn. Sorry. It took so long.